The hour of convening having arrived, all members of this house will please take their seats. All members, report to the floor of the house and take your seats. The clerk will ring the bell. We're going to have the morning roll call. All members present will please vote green to signify their presence in the chamber, and the clerk will unlock the machines. If so, the clerk will lock the machines. Doorkeepers will please close the doors and keep them closed. Well, good morning. Another glorious Georgia morning out there today. We're going to begin, as we do each day, with scripture reading and prayer by the chaplain, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. Our chaplain this morning will be introduced by the lady from the 156th House District, Representative Lisa Hagan. Representative Hagan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. It's my distinct honor and privilege to introduce to you this morning my good friend and my pastor, the Reverend Jason Davis. He, um, we attend Grace Community Presbyterian Church in Lyons, and he has been our pastor since it was planted in 2015. He does a wonderful job of faithfully preaching from the scriptures every Sunday, and we just feel so fortunate to have him as our pastor, and I'm just so thankful that he was able to come up this morning and share a word with us. So, thank you Pastor Jason for being here this morning.
Good morning, House of Representatives. It is an honor to be with you all this morning. I appreciate this opportunity. In the Holy Bible, in Romans Chapter 13, Paul says, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities. For there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God. Therefore whoever resists the authorities, resist what God has appointed." And Paul goes on from there. If we were to read a little farther, we would realize that Paul teaches two things in that account: that God raises up the government leaders that he so chooses, and the government leaders that he raises up are his servants and ministers for the good of the people that they serve. Everyone you who are here in this legislature this morning have been hand-chosen of the Lord God Almighty to be here for such a time as this. You are the ones that God has sovereignly chosen for this place and time. God is the governor of the universe ultimately, of course. He made it. He created the world. His authorship and ownership of the world is, uh, is the reason that he has authority. And all other authority that we experience is not intrinsic but extrinsic. It's been delegated by the Lord, and God has seen fit, in his good and perfect will, to raise up gifted men and women like yourselves to lead and govern on his behalf. In other words, every authority in the final analysis is established not by democratic vote or popular appointment, but by the single appointment of the supreme ruler of heaven and earth. Paul is saying there that the President of the United States, right down to the town council member of the most podunk of small towns, couldn't exercise his or her office for five minutes apart from the will of the ultimate ruler, God himself. And that means a couple of things. It means that each of you will be accountable, of course, to the Lord one day for the job that you are doing here even today, working hard to represent your constituents well and to serve them for their best interest. So it all to call you to a strong sense of duty, but it also means that you can call in prayer upon the one that raised you up. It just follows that if God has raised you up for this office at this time, that you can call on him for help when you need it. Paul goes on in that passage, secondly, to say that you are God's servants and ministers for the good of those that you govern. One of my favorite theologians is the late R.C. Sproul, a well-loved, respected pastor and theologian, and he was once invited to give a, uh, an invocation at the inaugural prayer breakfast for a Florida governor at one point during his ministry. And Dr. Sproul, in that address, explained that when pastors are consecrated to the ministry, they're ordained. And that ordination, he said, is a sacred occasion because we take vows to be faithful to God and the fulfillment of our ministerial office in the church. And then Sproul told the Florida governor, he said, "Sir, today is your ordination day because you are being ordained as God's minister of civil righteousness." It was the governor's ordination day because civil magistrates like yourselves are ordained by God. They are God's ministers, put there to be a blessing to the people that they represent through governing for the well-being of their constituents. Everyone, I want you to hear this morning that you are ministers and servants. Those are the exact words that the Apostle Paul uses in Romans Chapter 13. You are ministers and servants to be a blessing on behalf of those that God has raised you up to represent. And if God has raised you up as his chosen ministers and servants to the state of Georgia, you know that he is watching. So do it well. Do it for the people that you represent, and do it for the one that puts you here. Do it for his smile, for his approval, for his pleasure, and for his joy. Well, I'll just leave you all in closing with this. We live in the greatest state in the nation, don't we? Yes, the state of Georgia, and you all obviously think so, and that you're here giving your time and abilities in service to our great state. God has put us here during 2021. But I will encourage you who are resting your souls by grace through faith in Jesus on the cross to lift your eyes above the here and now and realize that as great as being here in America is, and as great as being here representing the state of Georgia is, that we are meant for another state, for another country. The writer of Hebrews says that we are looking for another state, another country, one that has foundations, one whose architect and builder is God. That's the writer of Hebrews way of saying that we're citizens ultimately of God's kingdom. And Jesus is our ultimate sovereign, everyone, and our forever future is to be with him in the glories of a new heavens and new earth. That means this morning that for you all who are in Christ, the best is yet to come. Let's pray, everyone. Heavenly Father, Paul says elsewhere in 1 Timothy 2 that he urges that supplications and prayers and intercessions and thanksgivings be made for all people. And so I pray for this House of Representatives today. I thank you for reaching every one of them. It is you that has raised each of them up for a time and place as this, to represent and to serve their constituents well, to be your servants and to govern, Father, on your behalf. I pray that you would give them joy in their work, pray that you would give them help, pray that you would give them wisdom that they might lead well. Father, remind them all day long that they are doing this ultimately by your appointment and for your glory. Amen. Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Doorkeepers will unlock the doors. The chair recognizes Chairman Hogan, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on Information and Audits has read the Journal of the previous legislative day and found it to be correct. And furthermore, Mr. Speaker, I think it's about time we have an Irish blessing. May your joys be as deep as the oceans, your troubles as light as its foam, and may you find sweet peace of mind wherever you may roam.
Chairman Hogan, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits, reports that the Journal of the previous legislative day has been read and found to be correct. Is there any objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The Chair hears none, and the Journal is confirmed. The clerk will read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day.
Mr. Burns, 1159, moves following establishes the order of business during the first part of the period unanimous, consents. Introduction of bills and resolutions. First reading in reference of House bills and resolutions. Morning orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. First reading of bills and resolutions, the clerk will read.
House Bill 11 EX by Representative Anderson of the 10th and Irwin of the 28th. Bill be titled Act to Authorize the City of Cornelia, Georgia to Exercise All Redevelopment and Other Powers.
Intergovernmental coordination.
That completes first readers.
Second reading of bills and resolutions, there are none. No reports of standing committees. We're going on now to morning orders. This house will come to order. House will come to order. Please give attention to the members in the will for morning orders. We've got a number of people that have signed up, and the Chair is going to limit each morning order to not more than two minutes. Two minutes per morning order. Chair recognizes the Vice Chair of the Majority Caucus, Representative Gravely.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Friends, I want you to hear me closely this morning. Miyamoto Musashi says, "Perception is strong and sight is weak. In strategy, it is important to see distant things as if they were close and to take a distant view of close things." Ladies and gentlemen, there's possibly a member of our body here who can do neither of what I just read because they lost their glasses. And I found these out there on the street this morning. Armani Exchange, they're a nice pair of glasses. Because I have mine, I was able to see close-up things from a distance, and I'm hoping the same for you. Let me know if you've lost a pair of glasses. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes the Minority Caucus Whip, Representative Wilkerson, for a morning order.
I think this body has recognized how mental health issues have impacted people across this state. I think many of us can tell stories of family members and the generational impact it has on, on us, and this body has taken a lead in doing some great work in a bipartisan effort. Today I come up here to talk about what they're doing in Cobb County. I want to recognize my Sheriff, Sheriff Craig Owens, for instituting the first 24/7 mental health facility in a jail. And this is important for many reasons. One, 70% of the inmates in Cobb County are, and many jails are, have mental health issues, 70%. On top of that, these individuals will one day transition back to society, and so the goal is that they will have a soft landing where they get the help they need as they come back in. So what I would love to see is, I would love to see this body continue the work it's doing, and unfortunately, it costs a lot of money to do this, that we put some money behind this in the budget next year and work together to be able to do this in the other 158 counties that are impacted. And, and, and I, like I said, I've talked to many of you who have had family members impacted by this, and I just want to say thank you to Sheriff Owens for doing this, and I want to say thank you to this body for all the work you're doing, and I would love to see us continue to do some great things together again. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Chairman Parsons for a morning order.
Thank you, Speaker Ralston. I'll just take my two minutes here. I know people have obviously noticed the rising prices in gasoline, hard not to, but I don't know how many people, I know some have, but I don't know how many people have noticed the rising price of natural gas. And it's risen over the last year, 150, maybe even 200% here in the United States. In Europe, it's risen 500%. I saw the other day where the Putin has kind of opened up the spigots for Europe and letting them have more of the gas, and that's where most of the gas, almost all the gas from, in Europe comes from. But anyway, we're, uh, you know, there's a lot of, like everything else, a lot of disinformation about these rising prices, whether it's gasoline or natural gas, and we're having a, Energy Utilities and Telecommunications is having a committee meeting or hearing this afternoon at 3:00 up in 403, trying to get to, to find out what the real issues are, what's causing the rises in the price, particularly to natural gas, and what they see long-term. So we have people from industry, industry observers, experts coming in, and I would invite, of course, certainly want the members there, but this will also be webcasts, so members of the, of the House and people out there in the, in the public, that would certainly be welcome. I would invite you to, to come in and see if we can get some of the, some of the actual facts about what's causing these prices, because that's the only thing, and people are going to start asking you, depending on how cold this winter is, not just here in Georgia, but across the country, the colder it is, the more the shortages are going to be and the higher the prices are going to be. So I think it would be important to, to tune into it. Um, you know, we live in an age of information. It seems like we live in an age of disinformation. That's a whole nother topic that I'll talk about another time. I will, one quote from a general who's not very popular, has not been very popular here in Georgia over the years, certainly a long time ago, William Tecumseh Sherman said, William Tecumseh Sherman said, "People will believe a delusion harder than they will believe the fact."
He must could see into the future. Chair recognizes for a morning order Representative Bentley, Chairman Dickey, and Representative Buckner for a morning order.
This is it. Good morning, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm so proud to stand here this morning and announce that today is a special day in the state of Georgia. It is the birthday of Mr. Lester P. down in Butler, Georgia. He's celebrating his 91st birthday on today. Happy birthday, Mr. Lester P. And I asked Chairman Mike Chokis from Americas, Chairman Robert Dickey from Musella, and Representative Debbie Buckner from Junction City to join me in this big announcement because P. Brothers Incorporated has served the state of Georgia for many, many years. With Georgia being the number one state to do business, we are proud to have P. Brothers Incorporated in our state for over 70 years. P. Brothers is a Christian-based family business founded on values of ethical standards, open dialogue, and truthfulness. And Mr. Lester, we are all here celebrating your 91st birthday. He and his family are back home watching this morning, so today is Mr. Lester P.'s day in the state of Georgia. So thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, colleagues, and we are celebrating the birthday of Mr. Lester P.
Chair recognizes Representative Cannon for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning, members. I'm here today to bring some attention to the need for us to advocate for at-risk renters in the state of Georgia. As many of you may have attended this morning, DCA held a conversation with legislators about the ERA, the Emergency Rental Assistance Funds that have been given by the federal government, and at this point, the percentage of how much has been spent by the state of Georgia is 9% out of that total amount, which is alarming, and it is necessary for us all to think about how during COVID-19, this pandemic, lots of unemployment, there are many families who are challenged right now with those rental payments. So anything you can do, possibly to reach out to your DCA representatives and to also speak with your constituents would be really appreciated in this time. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Chairman Houston, Chairman Dempsey, Chairman Darlene Taylor, Chairman Cooper, Speaker Pro Tim Jones, Representative Oliver, Representative Lot, Chairman Tankersley, Chairman Ballinger, Chairman Rich, Chairman Lynn Smith, and Chairman Mathiak for a morning
Good morning. This is a surprise for Speaker Ralston, but it's no surprise to the female leader standing up here today, and we have one Democratic leader as well. The House Republican Lady Chairs asked for this brief morning order to recognize Speaker Ralston for appointing several Republican women as chairs of House committees, and our one wonderful Mary Margaret Oliver as Chair of MARTOC. A comment was made yesterday that in Georgia, it is still rare for women in Georgia to have elected office. Well, we stand here today to debunk that myth. Not only were we elected, but we have excelled in leadership roles. We thank our constituents for giving us the opportunity to serve, and we thank our Speaker for recognizing our talents. I want to briefly mention, everybody, if you just raise your hand, Speaker Pro Tim Jan Jones, Chair Mandy Ballinger, Chair Sharon Cooper, Chair Katie Dempsey, Chair Penny Houston, Chair Karen Mathiak, Chair Bonnie Rich, your new best friend, Chair Lynn Smith, Chair Jan Tankersley, Chair Darlene Taylor, Mary Margaret Oliver, and Jody Lot, the floor leaders. So take a moment and say, "Go, girls." I was told to say, "Go, women," so I'm going to say, "Go, great-looking women." I'm not just going to leave it at women.
Thank y'all. You're very kind. My mama didn't raise no fool. Clerk will read the caption to a group of privileged resolutions.
Honoring the life and memory of Emma Jean Boyd. Honoring the life and memory of Mr. Adonis Ross A.D. Butler. Commending Ashley Beust, Tri-Cities High School's 2021 Professional of the Year. Commending Philip Miller, Tri-County's High School's 2021 Teacher of the Year. Recognizing commemorating the 76th Anniversary National Disability Employment Awareness Month and the 31st Anniversary enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, and for other purposes. That completes the reading of the privileged resolutions.
Is there any objection to adopting the privileged resolutions? The Chair hears none, and the resolutions are adopted. Listen up, we got some announcements. Listen up, we have some announcements. We have work that is going on here. Chair recognizes Chairman Cooper for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I fail to realize what creatures of habits we are. When I ask everybody to bring a gift, a Christmas gift, for Toys for Tots and put them in the boxes down as we go out of the Capitol, I'm used to coming in the LOB in the Vista's entrance. And yesterday, I had three people that had brought gifts ask me where the boxes were. Okay, guys, this is a reminder to bring a toy to make some child that will not be as fortunate as your children happy at Christmas, and the boxes. You get off the elevator on first floor, you turn to the right, you turn to the right like you're going to go out of the building, and there are two boxes there on either side right before you get to the officers, and it says Toys for Tots on them. So hopefully you will find those boxes, and thank you to everybody that's already brought a toy.
Chair recognizes Chairman Newton for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Committee on Access to Quality Healthcare will be meeting at 1:00 today in 606 of the LOB. We've got some important topics on both mental health and network adequacy. I know it glazes over a little bit, but mental health is an issue we all want to seriously address. It's going to be a good hearing. We've got some great people presenting. I look forward to seeing you.
Chair recognizes Chairman Petrie for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of the Human Relations and Aging Committee will meet at 1:30 today in 341. We're going to have some very important discussions and hearings about our nurse staff shortage in facilities across the state and to deal with the issue of retention and recruitment for nurses today and going forward. Hope everyone can be there.
Chair recognizes Chairman Parsons for an announcement.
Thank you, Speaker. Just once again, wanted to remind about the Energy, Utilities, and Telecommunications meeting today at 3:00 on the important issue that I spoke about before, the availability and pricing of natural gas, especially for us here in Georgia. 3:00, room 401, or 403, rather, upstairs. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Chairman Dickey for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Agriculture and Social Affairs Committee will meet today at 1:00 in 406 the LOB. Thank you.
That appears to complete our announcements. The Chair now recognizes the distinguished Majority Leader of the House for a motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. To the distinguished Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I move that this House stand adjourned until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, November the 17th, 2021.
Majority Leader has moved that this House be adjourned until Wednesday, November 17, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed will say nay. say no. The ayes clearly have it. This House will be adjourned until Wednesday at 10:00 a.m.